Good afternoon, everybody. We're back. Welcome back. Um, so we have three work sessions scheduled and they're all related to. Time. Which we all seem to never have enough of. So the first one is LD nine eighty-three, an act to exempt Maine from daylight saving time presented by our friend Senator Baldacci. We have. Uh, LD nine eighty-nine, a resolve directing the University of Maine system to study the potential effects of the state adopting Atlantic Standard Time. Um, sponsored by Senator Bennett of Oxford. And then LD ten forty-seven, an act to adopt Eastern Daylight Time year-round contingent on federal approval. And that too is presented by Senator Bennett. Um, we had the public hearings on these and they all kind of. Melded together, so we're going to get a bill analysis of them all melded together and then we will probably take them up. Individually as as necessary. So. Who was Caswell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I did present one bill analysis, um, and I'm gonna just take you to the second page. Uh, which has at the top, it has the three bills, what their titles are, a summary, and then. On the far right, what is actually proposing and at the bottom is actually prior legislation that's similar or identical to some of these. So LD nine eighty-three is proposing that the state go to Eastern Standard Time year-round. Federal law does allow a state to exempt itself from the daylight savings time. Um, and stick to Eastern Standard Time, so. The federal law establishes the standard time zone with Atlantic Standard, Eastern Standard, Central Standard, Mountain Standard. Pacific Standard. Um, and then there's the daylight. Which is allowed in the federal statute, uh, as I said, for a state to exempt itself from. So that's what. LD nine eighty-three does. LD nine eighty-nine attempts to, uh. Is is a resolve to undertake a study. To look at the state moving from Eastern Standard to Atlantic Standard. Under federal law, a state does need to get approval to do to move a time zone. And part of the approval process is a study of the potential effects on public health, the state's economy. Um, and to determine whether the adoption will serve the convenience of commerce. As required by the United States Department of Transportation. So this resolve is directing the University of Maine System. To undertake a study of moving Maine to Atlantic Standard Time. Last, in the, um. One thirtieth, this committee voted out the identical bill. The University of Maine System was to undertake that study within existing resources, so there was no fiscal note. And the university was not able to, uh, come up with the funds to complete the study. So LD nine eighty-nine is again asking the University of Maine System to find funds. To complete that study. So then this legislate, this this committee could, and then eventually the legislature could decide whether or not. To propose moving to Atlantic Standard Time. The third bill, LD ten forty-seven. Asks that. The state request permission to move out of. Eastern daylight time and into, excuse me. Out of Eastern Standard Time into Eastern Daylight Time, which is actually the same as Atlantic Standard. Just to make it a little more complicated. Um, so LD eight ninety-eight is asking for a study to move it to Atlantic Standard. LD ten forty-seven is saying, let's move to Atlantic Standard. Even though it says Eastern Daylight, same as Atlantic Standard. And LD ten forty-seven is contingent on action on the federal level. Um, and that was similar to, I believe you have in your packet in twenty nineteen. You should have an orange sheet in one of your bills. That says. Uh, chapter two sixty-eight. So in the one twenty-ninth, a very similar bill to LD one oh four seven was enacted. And that was contingent on similar events. One was federal law permits. Year-round, um. Year-round. Observation of Eastern Daylight Time and that all the states in in the one twenty-ninth, it was all the states in the Eastern Time Zone. Which goes from the coast over quite a bit. I don't know exactly how far. Um, in the one twenty-ninth, there was discussion about whether it should be contingent on all the states in the Eastern Time Zone moving. Or just the states along the coast. And and the one twenty-ninth voted to require all the states on the Eastern Time Zone. So again, this is prior, this is not. Um, what you're being asked to do. That law is passed and is on the books. So currently. If federal law permits Eastern Daylight, which is Atlantic Standard. And all the states in the time zone adopt it, then Maine switches to Atlantic Standards. So that's current law, which. LD. Uh, well, a couple of these LDs seek to amend.
Lynn, I have a question.
Hold on. Okay. Representative Paulus.
Um, with chapter two sixty-eight, the federal law permits and the time is that both things have to happen. For it to go in effect or either or.
Both.
Yeah.
And I think, and that was in response to, you heard testimony about, um, from the media about when, um. To top most month mainly television is broadcast and how Maine's. Is is on the same feed right now, or excuse me, the the time is based on the bigger metropolis areas. So if Maine goes to a different time zone, the media is not going to create a new, I I say a feed, but that's probably not the.
No, that's, yeah.
So the 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 media is not going to give Maine its own feed. We will see things. We will see the eleven o'clock news in New York at twelve, except when they switch to daylight savings and then it'll be the same time. Sorry, I just had to throw in that confusion.
Senator Baldacci.
So I just want to indicate, uh, and I know that Senator Bennett is here as well. These are two bills that we think. I, at least I have heard from many people on the street that would like us to keep one time zone. But I was going to propose to the committee, what I would like to do is amend LD nine eighty-nine. So that it looks at both the effects of Atlantic Standard Time or as well as. The effect, possible effects of exempting Maine from daylight savings time, because the literature. I just would like them to look at both options and make those considerations. And I would like to table the other two bills and try to carry them over. Because hopefully we would get a report by the end of this year that we could look at and make some decisions on. And so that is my motion, kind of a comprehensive motion.
The table.
Okay, okay, but I would I would move to table first nine eighty-three and ten forty-seven.
No.
I can't do that.
In the one.
If there's a second.
Oh, okay, yeah, I can move.
I might be premature for that.
Okay. Well, I would move to table, uh. I would, okay, let me just move to amend LD nine eighty-nine. To include both options to be looked at. That would be my motion.
Daylight saving times and Atlantic saving.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
To move in a second.
So discussion.
Right.
Um, I. I was looking at something comprehensive like that as well. Um, to kind of see if the study can look at the effects of both. And I would like the Senator from Oxford, if he could join us to maybe, uh, weigh in on that. But I'd also like to say, if that's a possibility, um, I would like to suggest some other language. That the report date be, let's say, February first of twenty. Twenty-four to give them that extra, you know, seven weeks, because statutory adjournment. Uh, it wouldn't take effect for days after. Uh, and that I would inquire if we can change the language from may submit to must submit. Um, and then that would eliminate the need of. Who, uh, of. Holding over either LD ninety-three or ten forty-seven, uh, because if they are required to submit legislation, um, must submit. Your thoughts on that for the analyst? And then if Senator Bennett could join us?
Um, I I am hesitant for the committee to say must submit because that sounds like this committee. Ordering itself, so you know you can't bind future. Future committees and in all likelihood, this will be the same committee, so you'll just be binding yourself, but. Um, that generally is frowned upon and there is the possibility that membership to this committee would change. It makes me very uncomfortable. I would need to find out whether you are actually, whether that would have, I should rephrase that. You can change it. I don't know if it would bind this committee to report out anything.
Can I follow up on that, Mr. Chair? Sure. Um, so hearing that, uh, if the good Senator from Oxford is amenable to doing both studies, um. My suggestion would be for the report backdate to be. Uh, February first. Uh, leaving it as may submit. And then, um, for the other work sessions, I would. Suggest that we keep one of the two bills as a placeholder, uh, as a carryover bill. Um, and then we could just, uh, dispose of the other one. But I'd like the Senator from, uh, the good Senator from Oxford, if he could join us.
Chair's indulgence, thank you.
Of course.
Thank, thank, very much.
Obviously.
Thank you. I appreciate that courtesy. I I'm, uh, for those watching at home. I'm, uh, Rick Bennett. I have the honor of serving fourteen towns in in Western Maine in the Maine Senate, uh, across Andersgog and Cumberland and Oxford Counties. Thank you, Representative Greenwood, for the question and for soliciting my thoughts on this. Uh, as I said in my testimony, I I really do think that we should study this and if we're gonna study it, let's look at. The two alternatives. The only thing I, well, one detail I would suggest that we. We focus on because this gets really complicated. People like, what's Atlantic Time? What's what's Standard Time? And it it gets confusing. And I think people of Maine know that there are basically two times, right? There's. There's Eastern Daylight Time and there's Eastern Standard Time. Those are the two. And Eastern Daylight Time, as reported, is Atlantic Standard Time, but. I don't, i- if it's permissible to actually change the wording, so everybody. Knows exactly what we're talking about. As the committee grapples with these issues, I think it'd be really helpful to the public debate. About this, so that people know, okay, we're talking about. The possibility of either staying on Eastern Daylight Time for an additional four months. Or we're talking about going on Eastern Standard Time for additional eight months. So I think that is the, the, so I would, I very much embrace your notion of having the study. Uh, include both alternatives and the relative advantages, disadvantages, costs, benefits of doing that. And, uh, there are resources, there are people at the University of Maine System who have studied. Time zones and changing the clocks in for other jurisdictions. Uh, there's a couple of professors that. One who did one, uh, study up in Scotland and it was just for lack of funding, because the the original bill from the hundred and thirtieth was. My legislation that the committee then put into that system and. I will, I will work very hard to make sure that's funded this year and I fortunately I'm on the appropriations committee and I maybe we can, you know, it was. It was seventy-five hundred dollars. It was like, and and I think that, you know, I know people may have different views on the ultimate solution here, but there's one thing. As Senator Balaji said, we hear all the time, it's like, can't we just stay on one time zone or the other, or one time, time or the other? So I think we'd be doing the public a great service by advancing this. And even if we don't, as a legislature, just decide to do anything here. I think maybe we're also by making. Having and stimulating the conversation, we're actually telling, uh, sending a message to Congress and particularly our members that. Yeah, the people of Maine would like you to deal with it. So that's my perspective on it.
So Senator Bennett, I. I guess the thing that I want to clear up is. These bills, the ten forty-seven and the nine eighty-three, not the study bill.
Yeah.
But. Is the. If I was gonna break down. This to one sentence is, we want to stop changing our clocks.
Right.
Is that the? The net effect of all of this?
I think if I can't speak for Senator Balachi, but that's, we agree on that. His, the only difference is the bill that he proposes keeps us on daylight standard time. Year year round, which. We're only on for like four months of the year, but if we did that, we don't need to ask the feds for their permission. My bill moves us on in the other direction of the Eastern Day Daylight Time. Which we're on for eight months of the year, but we have to ask the feds permission. So that's the difference. Did I say that right?
You did.
Okay.
I think you said said most of that, right?
Okay.
Yeah, that, because that's the thing is, is in and Mr. P is on Zoom and would probably like to be brought in as well. Um. I I think that. My sense is that people are just tired of the changing the clocks back and forth. And I'm trying to to to. Break this down to the simplest. Um. Common denominator, which is. We want to be, we we want to stop changing our clocks and we want to stay on the, in the time zone. That we're currently in, meaning. Right now, when we've sprung ahead. And. We haven't fallen back yet, right? So we're the time zone.
Daylight savings time now.
So that. Okay. So, go ahead.
I also want to offer my support to the Senator. Is this really good data that we talked about last week about increased car accidents, heart attacks and other mental health disturbances for? I can tell you personally, um, I am really challenged by both of them, um. Even though we gain an hour in the spring, it's still, it takes like two weeks to get re re-acclimated to the time. So, um, because of all the. I mean, data-driven. Um. Um, outcomes that we know from these time changes that are really bad for people, um. So I think we really should study it and come up with a solution.
Oh, and Mr. P.
Uh, yes, thank you for having me and good morning to you all. Um, if if I may offer that there, there already have been many, many studies of this. And they are almost all showing that it's both the clock change. Um, and remaining on daylight time that are harmful. When we spring forward, we have a sudden acute. Uh, spike in, uh, heart attacks and car accidents, for example. Uh, the effects of which last for several days or even weeks. But as we remain on daylight time, we have a, um, chronic circadian misalignment and sleep deprivation. Uh, average of nineteen minutes less sleep per night, every night that we remain on daylight time. Um, so it's, it it has been thoroughly studied that both the clock change. Uh, and remaining on the wrong clock are are harmful to health and safety and, uh, performance in school and work.
Um, so. Mr. P, Senator Baldacci has a question, but I just have a question, real quick question. It's eleven thirty-seven here roughly. In Augusta. If we stayed on daylight time. What time would it be right now?
So you are currently observing Eastern Daylight Time, um, which is eleven forty.
Okay.
So it it's standard time, it's currently, uh, ten forty Eastern Standard Time. But all of the Eastern United States is on Eastern Daylight Time, which is an hour ahead of standard time, making it eleven forty. Um, the reason that you observe.
Shouldn't have gone any further than that. Should have just left it.
Senator?
Yeah.
The answer is eleven forty. To your question.
Right, so. Yeah, so Eastern Daylight Time. Is.
Where we are now.
Where we are now.
Yes, sir.
That's. What I needed to hear. Senator Baldacci.
Thank you, Mr. P. I I don't have a question for him. I had comments.
Go, yeah, sure.
So I would, the reason I'm asking that both of these be table, I shared with the committee, uh, recent literature that did show. Uh, support everything Mr. P said in terms of the health benefits of exempting Maine from daylight saving. I think that, uh. Carrying over both bills and doing the study would make the most sense, so we have available and get to the point. That Representative Greenwood make it much more likely, we're gonna report some legislation out. Um, but I think we need to go forward and examine both. Have an exam, a May, University of Maine examination of both, have a report back. And then be able to consider which options to go with at that point. I think it would be premature prior to a study to kill either one. Those are my points.
Representative Rice.
So I'm. Trying to make some sense of what we have in front of us for a study and it appears that we really need to rework the. Verbiage in the study, so we know what we're dealing with here. I think one thing we can agree on is we don't want to use the term Atlantic in in inscription of our time zone. And second, uh, the the question is going to get down to whether it's going to be Eastern Daylight Time or Eastern Standard Time. And the study that the University of Maine could do for us would be to determine which one looks better. For us, is that, that a fair?
Some was a motion on the floor to to have them look at both. It's been moved in second, and so the pending motion is to amend the study to look at both. Uh, possible time changes.
But, uh, so the 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 problem. The problem, Senator, is that. This refers to Atlantic Standard Time. I think we all agree we don't want that term.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So it'd either be.
Daylight savings.
Daylight savings time or to exempt Maine from daylight savings.
And Eastern Standard Time.
Yeah.
Right?
We would just convert to Eastern Daylight Time, which does not include changing the clocks. Correct?
Daylight time or Eastern Standard Time. Yeah.
I know.
So, uh, uh, you're gonna be asking the university to look at the two times, Eastern Standard, Eastern Daylight and the impacts. On the economy and the people.
Yeah.
And then it sounds to me they'll come back and this committee will decide, do you want to set one time? And then which of the two?
Yeah.
Eastern Daylight, Eastern Standard.
That is the point.
That's what I understand and and I will say to the Atlantic Standard Time. I would con- consider that a technical issue. Um, if Atlantic Standard Time is the same as Eastern Daylight. Um, Revise's office could do that and I would never have to ask you guys, that was okay.
Is that okay with you?
Uh, to change it to Eastern Daylight Time? Yes, it's preferable to me, actually, and I appreciate that.
It doesn't sound so.
No, well, it people don't relate to Atlantic.
Right.
They relate, Maine people relate to one or the other, and so I I I think we just. Make it easy for people to understand.
Yeah, Mr. P. Again.
Uh, yes, and I agree with the, um, suggestion to add Eastern Standard Time to the study. I very much appreciate that. Um, I wanted to ask consideration that, um, uh, safety, uh, education, productivity and energy. Uh, might be added to the study. Uh, it appears right now that it's only on commerce and health. Although I very much appreciate health being included, but, uh, perhaps safety, education, productivity and energy.
If if I may, Mr. Chair, so education is in there, healthcare is in there, um. Energy. I don't see energy, um. But I, you know, I think it's part of commerce. It talks about. Um, and this is, this is to this, these words, you can add energy or or anything else. These words encompass what the feds require. Um, so that's why it's limited this way, but education is there, energy, um, is not, unless you assume it's part of the economy and. Commerce.
Okay, I'd like to, so we have the motion to. Yeah, can we amend the amendment? But go ahead. I I had a question for the analysis before we get to to your procedural question. Um, the summary says it's within the university main system available resources. Was that still our intent or did we want to, uh, look for a fiscal note on this? So that it doesn't die for lack of funding. That's my concern.
Is that a question to me? Um, thank you. Uh, it could go either way. Uh, this is gonna go to the table. And if if I have anything to say about it, I hope I do, I, with the committee's support behind. Really wanting this done, which I think is going to be critical to getting this even seventy-five hundred dollars appropriated if we need to. Um, there may be some other, uh, sources of 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 funding and maybe Mr. P has some ideas about. Um, about that too, um. A- as an expert in this area about, you know, who's actually. Are there funders for for looking at this and making consistent, uh, time zones? I think it might be. Useful to see if there's ex- exterior funding that could be brought in, but in the meantime, I would, I would make every effort to, uh. Make sure it survives the table.
Mr. I just want to indicate that his amendments about the dates are friendly amendments incorporated.
I was just, um, going off of Representative Greenwood. Would it be better just to put the fiscal note on it just so that it's there and then let the appropriations when, you know? If we can get outside and then we can take the fiscal note off or something like that, just have it. In there.
It's fine with me. I I I don't want to force the university system to, uh, to do an unnatural act here without legislative. You know, without legislative support. I mean, this is something they clearly would like to, uh, do and are capable to do it, but I, you know, I I do think if. If this is a legislative priority, we ought to find a small amount of funding to do it.
Well, I just, I real, I. I would say that we should. Put the fiscal note on it just so that we have it available and then it will go to the table. I think. We. Hearing the committee and stuff and we don't want it to end up like it did last time and not to say it would, but just. Let's cover our bases if if possible. I don't know if that's what Representative Greenwood was.
I mean, I, the maker of the motion, I would, that would be another friendly amendment.
That would be another friendly amendment.
Yeah.
Um.
I would make that that a map.
Okay.
Right.
So we're adding a fiscal note to it. I think it's a lot easier if we have a fiscal note as well, because we're not talking about. A nebulous number, you you know, Mr. P, you have your hand raised again.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you to answer, uh, Senator Bennett's question. I I don't particularly know, uh, anyone who would want to fund the study. I know many scientists who would like to participate in the study. Um, uh, I I also had a question about the letter from Samantha Warren, uh, UMS Director of Government, uh, Community Relations dated March thirty-first. Um, she, uh, quotes, uh, estimated costs ranging from fifteen thousand to seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, which differs from the, uh, amount specified of seventy-five hundred dollars.
Representative Rice.
Uh, just another question. We we have December six as a timeframe for the study.
Representative Greenwood have a. A friendly amendment.
So that's, that's, that's in, okay, that's already included in there.
Yeah.
Okay, um. That, uh. That, that's it.
If, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Can I read what I believe the, uh. Senator Baldacci and Representative Paulus have agreed as their amendment. So to, uh, have. So on line ten, which identifies, um, Eastern Standard Time and Eastern Daylight Time as. Weather adopting permanent Eastern Standard Time, thank you, Eastern Daylight Time, having the university study. Um, Eastern Standard Time and Eastern Daylight Time. Add energy to the list of. Uh, items they study. To take out the funding requirement, so there's a fiscal note and to change the report date to February first of twenty twenty-four. That's what I captured.
Uh, the only thing I would would add is that line one should be. Modified, maybe the title should be modified.
Absolutely.
Other than that, I think you have it.
Right. Go ahead.
When would this actually take effect? Soon we pick one or the other? Do we have an effective date?
That would be dependent upon. What we report out.
So it's quite possible that this could not, might not be in effect until two thousand and twenty-five?
That's possible.
Okay, that's just why I went to the show. Thank you. Okay, that's just why I want to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we could make it any year we wanted, right? I mean, in theory.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I, I think it was our intent on our side to make sure that we get the study. Um, we were comfortable with doing the study of both options, um, but giving them ample time to report back. Uh, giving them the option to, uh, report on a bill if, if necessary, uh, or we could take the other approach and keep one of the other two bills as a, as a carryover, as a, as a mechanism to move forward, uh, after their report.
Okay. Is everybody okay with the amendments to nine eight-nine? That Lynn just gave to us? Is, okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion, we've had additional friendly amendments, I assume they're friendly. I don't see any fists flying. Um, so, um, how about we vote on that motion? And then maybe we can report out LD nine eighty-nine? Okay, so to amend nine eighty-nine as described by the analyst a few minutes ago, um, well, do we need to vote on the amendment first?
So that's what you moved forward was ought to pass as amended.
Okay, oh, okay, okay. So we're gonna just vote out whether, uh, motion ought to pass on LD nine eight-nine with all of the amendments as, as Lynn said. And so we'll take a roll call on that, I guess?
Representative Underwood?
Yay.
Representative Underwood votes yay. Representative Pamela?
Yes.
Representative Pamela votes yay. Representative Adams is absent. Representative Greenwood?
Yes.
Representative Greenwood votes yay. Senator Leiford?
Oops, sorry.
Yes.
Senator Leiford votes yay. Senator Baldacci?
Yes.
Senator Baldacci votes yay. Senator Nangle?
Yes.
Senator Nangle votes yay. Representative Stover?
Yay.
Representative Stover votes yay. Representative Paulus?
Yes.
Representative Paulus votes yay. Representative Copeland?
Yes.
Representative Copeland votes yay. Representative Reisman?
Yes.
Representative Reisman votes yay. Representative Dahlak?
Yes.
Representative Dahlak votes yay. And Representative Abdi?
Yes.
Representative Abdi votes yay. Unanimous with one absent.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, at this point, I don't know, I, I guess I would ask our analyst is if it's our intent to carry over a bill into the next session, um, what would the motion need to be in order to do it? Can we, because we don't carry them over at this point. We would vote later in the session to carry them over. So it would be a tabling motion at, at this point.
That's correct.
Um, okay, Mr. Chair, I would move that we table item, uh, LD nine eighty-three.
Second.
Second. So we have a motion and a second to table LD nine eighty-three. Any discussion? Uh, there's no discussion on tabling motion, sorry. Uh, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Any opposed? None. Okay. So.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
This, yes, Representative Greenwood.
So we're on LD ten forty-seven.
Um, sure are.
Since we have a, uh, an item that has been tabled, um, with the, at least my expectation that we have a vehicle to move something forward, should we need to, uh, I would motion, uh, ought not to pass on LD ten forty-seven.
And we have a motion and a second ought not to pass on LD ten forty-seven. Any discussion? Really? Nothing? Okay, um. Uh, so.
Oh, okay. Well, since you asked for discussion, I guess I'll.
No, that's fine. No, go ahead.
Um, you know, I would, I would, I would just indicate that, you know, depending on the study, um, you know, that, that may generate thoughts on what is now currently LD ten forty-seven, uh, but the committee could certainly amend that nine eighty-three, um, to incorporate anything that the study might bring forward. So again, this is not a, um, a negative thought on ten forty-seven, it's just a way to clean up.
Yep.
Our, our agenda.
Perfect. Great explanation. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna do a roll call on ten forty-seven.
Representative Underwood?
Motion is ought not to pass, correct?
Correct.
Yay.
Representative Underwood votes yay. Representative Pamela?
Yes.
Representative Pamela votes yay. Representative Adams is absent. Representative Greenwood?
Yes.
Representative Greenwood votes yay. Senator Leiford?
Yes.
Senator Leiford votes yay. Senator Baldacci?
Yes.
Senator Baldacci votes yay. Senator Nangle?
Yes.
Senator Nangle votes yay. Representative Stover?
Yay.
Representative Stover votes yay. Representative Paulus?
Yes.
Representative Paulus votes yay. Representative Copeland?
Yes.
Representative Copeland votes yay. Representative Reisman?
Yes.
Representative Reisman votes yay. Representative Dahlak?
Yes.
Representative Dahlak votes yay. Representative Abdi?
Yes.
Representative Abdi votes yay. That's unanimous with one absent.
Thank you.